This conference will now be recorded.
Hello, my name is Joe Heinrichs. Today is Tuesday, January 16th, and we are starting the Library Board Meeting. I'm serving as MC for today. Today's roll call. If I can get the right screen. Just so I can see everybody. One moment more. Malavika?
Here, Joe.
Laura?
Present.
If someone else can call them off, I'll write them down as we go. Sylvia?
Here. Uh oh.
I can do it. I've got the roster. Okay, so Steve Deming is absent. Tom Engelman is absent. Sylvia just said she was present. Laura Guinness is present. Joe is present. Michael, how do you say your last name, Michael?
Steady. I'll steady, and I'm present.
I'll steady. Nice to meet you. Welcome. You're present. Judy Liam?
Yes, I'm on the phone line, so I don't know what you can see, but I'm here. I can hear you.
Hi, Judy. Okay, Amanda Mato? Absent. Malavika?
Yep, here, Laura.
Okay, so I think that's the full roll call, right?
Yep.
All right, I'll turn it back to Joe if you're ready to run, continue running.
I think so. Okay, and then we have also Jeff, Lexi, I'm assuming Casey, and Marion McGinnis. Do we have any other friends or anyone?
We do. Jennifer is also here, and so is Tracy.
Okay, so we have a consent agenda. Do we have approval? Anyone who would like to approve the agenda?
I will, Joe. Malavika.
Okay.
Second, Sylvia.
Thank you. And then for a vote, Malavika?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes, I.
Sylvia?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
My vote is yes. Okay. Moving on, we have the minutes. Have people had a chance to look over the minutes? Are there any questions?
No, I don't. Malavika, I don't.
Okay.
I can vote, this is Laura. Laura will motion to approve the minutes.
I will second Laura. Malavika.
So we do, we do not, we've already approved that with the consent agenda, so we don't need a motion for the minutes or the financial reports.
Okay.
Sorry, guys.
Go on to public with comment.
Okay, and seeing that there is none, we'll go on to any report from friends.
There's no update from the friends. They were unable to meet this week because they were scheduled last week to meet, and that was when the first round of the big storm hit, so they have not met.
Okay. Um. Personnel, or I'm sorry, committee reports, finance. With Tom not being there. Does anybody have any, any questions on the financial pages? And I'll do what I can. Seeing none, we'll let that go for now. Personnel. And that would be Amanda, and she's not up here.
I'm not aware of any other updates.
Okay, how about advocacy?
Joe and all of us here, our idea team is going to meet today in the library. They were supposed to meet last week, but again, with the storm and things like that, they had to postpone. So I will get to know more about what was discussed after I get the minutes of this meeting, after they are done. And one beautiful thing that they realized today is, which is really nice, some of them are at different buildings to come to the meeting, but the weather is still cold, so they are going to run the meeting on Zoom. So I will be able to give you more reports during our next meeting of what was discussed by all of us. So thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Director's report, Jeff?
Thank you, Joe. Just two things to expand upon in addition to the report that was included in your board packet. Number one is, we did have to close a few additional times. Obviously, as you know, on Friday and Saturday, we closed due to the weather, and then today, we had to close special collections to the public due to staffing issues as well. So there were a couple of additional closures that we're not used to doing. They were abnormal, but just to keep you informed for that disruption to public service. Speaking of public service, there were a couple of recent changes in terms of the service model, and that included service desks that we added to the children's areas at both Fairmount and at Eastern. And we're excited with how those are playing out so far. This does give patrons better access to some subject matter experts to help with youth materials and services, and give staff the opportunity to meet patrons at their point of need and better build some more relationships, in addition to the great work that youth services staff already does to the community. So we're excited about those two service points. And then the third one is actually at Main, which is the Information Services Desk. You'll see a new desk in the area near the Maker Space and the Adult Computers. And again, that is to better provide some better direct public service to our patrons as they come into the libraries. We're excited at those service points. And then the last thing to point out was the checked-in podcast, which had a feature, a featured guest, which Malavika, I believe, had shared via email with the ALA president, Emily Robinsky. We're excited to have her on, and that was a direct relation from the relationship that has been developed by Brittany Peacock, our Community Outreach Supervisor, and her role as the President of the American Association of Bookmobile Outreach Services, which is that national organization. So we're really excited for that opportunity as well. And with that said, I'm happy to answer any questions on the report.
Jeff, I don't have a question, but I just wanted to say thank you that patrons now can access LinkedIn Learning, which is fantastic. And I kind of shared it in an ALA group message, and I got several questions saying that it was great that a public library was doing this. And so it's fantastic. So thank you for the LinkedIn learning service that we have now for our community.
And I had one, perhaps unrelated, comment, Jeff, following up on your board report. The board statistics, I just wondered if it would be clearer if we called that patron statistics, because it's stats on the patron visits, you know, in the breakdown there and.
Yeah, I think I understand your point, because on the spreadsheet, it says Davenport Public Library Board Stat Form.
Yeah, so I was like, oh. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, we can, we can definitely make that change.
I didn't think it was a big deal, but just when I was opening it, I was expecting it to see some of the board work that we'd been doing, you know, on like our core competencies, or where we have strengths or weaknesses. And so I just wanted the naming to be more reflective of what it is reporting on.
Yeah, we could definitely do that, Laura. Thank you for pointing that out. And that's another area we're looking to hope to improve upon in the coming year as well, is the way that we're maintaining statistics and then also reporting those to the board and then the rest of the public.
Okay. Moving on to Council liaison. Marion, do you have anything to report?
Just a little bit, Joe, and thank you. And I hope everybody's staying warm. So we have started the new year with our new council. We have five new people on the city council, five new alderpeople. That are, that's five new people that may use the library, may not use the library. I would urge you to, as always, I mean, I know, I've been on the board since, council since 2017, and this is certainly the largest number. They are drinking through fire hoses right now. You know, our work doesn't stop just because people are new, and so there are projects that are coming across their agendas that we all know that are huge amounts of money, and they're like, wow, what's this? So we are, and they're working very hard and diligently to, but I know it's a lot for them. But in any case. So I certainly encourage you to reach out if you wish. I believe everybody's contact information is on the city's website now, so feel free to do that. There are a couple of big things not really related to the library happening right now. One is the discussion around Annie Witt, and I wanted to share a little bit more of that with you. We, the city for a number of years has looked for a new purpose for Annie Witt, because it is an unsustainable, a beautiful campus, but unsustainable in, in terms of the amount of work that really needs to happen there. So we had, they had, the city had talked before I was on council to, to the folks that did the Black Hawk, and they looked, weren't interested. And so moved on. So it's not something that is easily manageable. And so last summer, we had a new person come who isn't new to the city, Chris Ailes, who I was part of the walkthrough with him along with some staff and alderpeople. And he came back and is interested in going forward in redeveloping most of the site as.
Can't hear.
Affordable. Hey, Marion, you cut out. You said he was redeveloping most of the site as, and then it went silent at the critical point.
Housing, and he would be using.
Marion.
Marion, we can't hear you.
That in.
Using affordable housing tax credits and historic tax credits. Annie is one of two in the local districts in this Meyer is a historic district at the city. Which means that every, you're by the HPC and should file the sec, going after historic. I can't hear you, Malavika. Well, I thought somebody said something, but I guess he didn't. In any case, so everything about the site, any historic building. You cannot hear me. Okay, at all? Or am I dropping out?
You, you cut out when you said he had interest in redeveloping the site as.
No.
As affordable housing. As, let's see, can I back up? Because you guys are dropping out to me as well, so I don't know if it's, right, as affordable housing. Can you hear that?
Yep.
Yeah.
Um, you did. Okay, all right. I will try to talk more slowly. Maybe that will help not move around. So. Um, and so, but he would be using historic tax credits as well, which protects not just the exterior historic, but the interior as well. So it's for, from my standpoint, is probably the best solution because of the retention of all the elements. There is, there are certainly some questions right now coming from the junior, from the junior theater about their location. There has been a discussion for some years about is that campus the right place for them? But it has been a quiet conversation, not a private conversation and not a big conversation, but a conversation, because it is awkward. They're not all in one building. They're scattered all over the place. And so we're getting a lot of, a fair number of emails concerned about that. There is, there is no plan to get rid of the junior theater, first of all. That's not part of this discussion. Chris Ailes has said in terms of the library, in terms of the theater itself, that's, he would lease it to the junior theater for a dollar a year. And so there's, there's, and it may not be the long-term home for them, but there's been questions about if a better facility would be better to do everything they do, because they are spread out. But what brought this now, so after we talked to Chris last summer, he went back, did his due diligence. In order for him to move forward and get these dollars, which are not available to the city, the affordable tax credits or the historic are not available to cities. He, he has to have control of the site, and it has to be zoned, resident, it has to be zoned properly. And so that's why it's coming now. He will have to get his dollars and then this, his possession of Annie Mitten-Meyer, if it happens, would take place, his contract is for a year. And in that time, he believes he can get the dollars he needs. So he would only take possession if that happens. And, and the junior, and he, and the last thing a historic developer wants to deal with in most cases is a large, any building with a large monumental space, like a church or a theater, because you can't break that into bits. It's not allowed under historic tax credits. So it's like, this is not, this is like over at Marycrest, I think that their auditorium is still sitting empty. You can't break it up if you're doing historic tax credits. You have to keep a certain percentage. It's very complicated, but so it's, it's not something. But it's coming now because of all these other hoops that, that we have to step through for him in terms of getting it zoned properly. So it feels sudden to people, but it's not really sudden. And so there are certainly a lot of questions right now, and I understand that. And I wanted to give you kind of the backstory to all of this that's happening. It's, it's buried there in all the information, but not always what people see. So in any case, so that's, that's emerging. The other thing with the Humane Society, which has been a big topic of discussion. Just the bottom line is they canceled their contract. We didn't cancel their contract. They canceled their contract, said we are, we are not doing services after the end of February of 2024, even though their contract went through June. So the city has certainly been looking at other models. Their request right now, they're at about 400,000. Their request is for 1.4 billion, which is a substantial, that's more than three times their annual, what their annual amount has been. The city has to look at any service. There are very specific dollars this comes out of, and that they can come out of, and that's the same, this is the same sets of dollars that we use to fund fire and police. So it's something that the city has to certainly look at. There are conversations continuing. There is a, there is a staff and council group that will be, I'm not part of that, that will be going back, but that's the situation there. But that was, this is not, this was not instigated by the city down for, it was instigated by the partnering agency. So, so hopefully that will all turn out well. I think, I don't think anybody on the city council wants to be in the animal control business. But we also have to look at, you know, an increase of, you know, three times, over three times what someone has gotten. So that's where that is. And then the final thing, which is more related to downtown, and Chris, I didn't, Jeff, I don't know if you had heard this, but they are going to try to go in, because there are huge piles of snow downtown. The streets are clear, but the piles of snow, and they were not able to, because of the cold, cold weather, they were not able to do, they usually go in on Sunday nights and clear those piles. With, as cold as it was on Sunday, they cannot, the diesel doesn't work, they can't, it's just too cold to clear the snow, which is, sounds ironic. But at a certain point, diesel trucks don't work very well in cold weather either. So the last thing I heard from, from Nicole Gleason was that they were going to try to go back and look at this again on tomorrow to see if they could, what their clearance is going to be. So that certainly doesn't impact the other libraries, but impacts the downtown library. And so, Jeff, I didn't know if you could.
Hey, we can't hear you, Marion.
Marion, we cannot hear you.
Can I send her a text?
It's so, in any case, they're all in February, and they're on Saturday, and Steve often comes to those, but, and you're certainly welcome there. Parts of the budget and deal with that. And again, this year, we have five new people involved in this. So it is a more intricate process, I think, than in the past couple of years. That's it. Sorry, I was cutting out.
Marion, can I ask a question about Annie Witt and Meyer? I don't know if it's still there, but what happens to Vera French-Pine Knoll working with the kids? Or are they not there anymore?
They're not, so Vera French isn't there at all. Vera French is not there at all. They haven't been. Family Resources was the one that had a lot of services on the campus. And Family Resources moved its administrative offices, they moved them last year. They were occupying less and less of the property. When I went through last summer, most of the buildings, so there were a couple of buildings that, that Family Resources is in and has, and has been in. But they're mostly, it's, they're not using them for services in the way they were. But buildings that, when I was over there, it had been a number of years since I had gone through it, they're almost all empty. The, the youth, the sort of youth detention center has been closed for years. There was another building there that the pipes froze up. Nobody was in it, and the pipes froze up, and it's a modern building, and it was taken down. But all the buildings that, almost all the buildings that Family Resources, who was the primary user, are empty, and they were last summer when I was there. There's one back in the that restoration, Renaissance Restoration, you might remember that. They did historic preservation was in, that has been unoccupied since they left like 15 years ago. The large, huge building, that is the biggest one on campus, has been empty for years.
Marion, what?
Let's see. Caviar Street Farms is in a building, now Caviar Street Farms has only been there for a year. I mean, they moved there a year ago, if that. So I believe that Chris has said that he will, sorry?
They remodeled and refurbished that building.
Yes, and I think that that one, he has also talked about leasing to them. So.
Interesting.
Yeah, so that's, yeah, those have been, you know, those have been conversations. But again, that's, I mean, he would prefer to have that as also, and someday may, it may be, you know, it may be restored. But, but that was my understanding, was he had talked to them and said that they should be able to stay. And I think, I can't, that's not from the horse's mouth, but that's part of the conversation I had heard. Okay. So in any case, there's also people, they don't want affordable housing there. There's people in the neighborhood that are, are they're concerned about traffic on Eastern. I'm sure with a bigger footprint, there might be another light. I don't know that, but you know, that's all something that would be looked at. But so, so there is a hearing. There is a, there is a, well, it goes, first, it goes to plan and zone. And there is a plan and zoning meeting tonight, and this will come up there. And then from that point, they will make their decision. It won't really come to council, I don't think, until, again, in terms of the rezoning, won't come until, until later. But it has to go through planning and zoning, and it is on the planning and zoning calendar for tonight. And they meet, I think, at 5:00 o'clock. I'm not sure, but I think that's their usual meeting. So, and that usually takes a couple of Yeah, I don't know how long.
I was, this is Laura, I did.
Those are the kind of the things that are cooking. Is movement forward on the overpass down there on Concord, which is extremely important. And so that's exciting as well, and that planning has started to go, and that's part of the money from Canadian Pacific. And also then we got a huge grant through the Transportation Board to help complete that, and that is the overpass over Concord. And then also building an elevated road around that protects our water pollution control plant. And so it's a flood and Canadian Pacific impacting together. So that's moving forward as well. So it doesn't stop. Keeps going.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to new business. We have to review the strategic plan for 2022 to 2024.
Thank you, Joe. So as you know, strategic planning provides a framework for trustees, administration, leadership, and staff to work together to document and establish a direction for the organization. The library has historically completed strategic planning every three to five years. And in 2021, the library worked with Aston and Associates to gather community feedback through a survey and a series of focus groups with employees, trustees, members of the public, and community partners. And the Board of Trustees at that time adopted the triennial strategic plan 2022 to 2024 in January of 2022. And that covered three calendar years, 2022, 2023, and this year, 2024. Administration and leadership review and update the plan at least quarterly, and then will provide a written status report to the board annually, generally at the January meeting, which is what we're doing today. The current plan lists three strategic directions and a number of objectives and goals. Goal number one is to improve marketing. Goal number two is to better reach underserved communities. And goal number three is to better engage underserved or underrepresented communities in our facilities. So we feel that the library has made significant progress over the last two years on many of those goals, objectives, and action plans. And at this time, I encourage you to turn to the report in your packet to review. It's the large one that says strategic plan at the top, 2022 to 2024. So this strategic plan, just a brief note about the key in colors. The black text is 2022 updates, and then 2023 updates were broken out by quarter, and that was for, primarily for library staff to track. The quarter one is blue, quarter two is green, quarter three is red, and then quarter four is updates. And that's what you'll see in this report. On page number two, goal number one is to improve marketing. And the strategic issue is how can the library leverage its strong part, community partnerships, stable budget, city support, and good programming and outreach to improve marketing? And each one of these are broken out by objectives. Objective 1.1 was to refine and implement strategic. Objective 1.1 was to refine and implement strategic marketing plan to reach more residents, inform them of the scope of library services. And that is struck through because we believe we have substantially completed that to this point. And below that section, you'll see more details on a summary of each of the action plans, and a summary on the next page or so of what actions have been taken for that particular objective. And that one actually goes on until page five. And I don't know if there are any questions or comments on 1.1. And 1.2 is to expand what current patrons know about library services. We've mostly completed this. However, number four is to create a library ambassadors program, and that was assigned to the Development Officer. And library administration has some questions about that, we believe we need some direction from the board on whether that should still be a goal, and if so, what does it mean? What is the library ambassadors program? And what is the board envisioned for that?
Joe and Jeff, if I might share something?
Go ahead.
In my mind, when I, I mean, this is just a rough sketch in my mind as a library ambassador, you know, being a part of a community, like, you know, I have, we have neighborhood watches and things like that, being a part of the community, talking about what the library events are at that time, that's one part of ambassadorship I see it myself. Or the other one would be, you know, we normally, people get together, you know, like how museums have, you have a breakfast meeting, or, you know, like I invite people, let's say, at my house, and, you know, talk about the library and things that it offers on a periodic basis. So it could be me as an ambassador, as a part of the board. I mean, this is my rough thinking that I feel, or if I go to my temple, let's say, I mean, I can't talk about Danforth Public Library at Rock Island, but what I mean is, if I go to a temple, or if I attend a commission meeting within the city, or if I'm on a board of some other institution in the city, I talk, that's Danforth, City of Danforth, I talk about the library and shit. I mean, I, I feel this is me as an ambassador, but there are various outreach activities, I feel, that we could think of, me in the sense as a board, it's a, it's a much broader discussion to have.
Yeah, I, I think, sorry, did I interrupt you, Malavika?
No, 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 you didn't.
I was going to, yeah. I think that we certainly haven't defined or formalized that, and neither have we put any accountability to it. So if it's going to become a robust something, this ambassador thing, I think we have to do all of those things. I mean, we don't report, we're, I mean, it's informal, I don't think we're asked to report like every month, like, what have you, board member, done to be an ambassador to the library? So it's a little loosey-goosey. So, you know, we have, if we want it, we have to formalize it, tighten it up, and give it some accountability.
And I also think, I mean, Sylvia, just to jump on what she was saying, just a thought again, it could be something, I can also see this as a volunteer opportunity, it may not be any one of us, I mean, I'm just thinking, again, not clear in my thoughts right now, but it could be a volunteer opportunity where someone wants to jump in and be a volunteer. The volunteer jumps in to be an ambassador of the library, so he or she takes it on them to go out and talk about the library, promote library services and events, and, you know, all the fun things that we have to offer. This is just a thought, I need to write it down to think more about it. But a volunteer becomes the library ambassador by applying, or, you know, I don't know what the process is, but a volunteer being a city, city library ambassador, something like that. I'll think more.
Okay, thank you, Malavika, thank you, Sylvia. Part of what we're struggling with in terms of defining what that goal should be is, it's under 1.2, which is expand what current patrons know about library services. And the examples that Malavika shared were not necessarily geared towards library patrons, they're geared more towards potentially anybody else in the community that may or may not be a library patron. So that's an area that it sounds like we may need to either table or explore further, maybe give some thought to what we might want that to look like.
Yep.
Any thoughts from any of the other board members?
No.
Probably something to discuss at a future meeting as we all take some time offline to think about it.
Yeah, I think that seems like a good idea, because we're not, we're not like having a robust conversation right now, and we probably just need some time to think about it, but it sounds like we, we, it's on us, board members, to think about it and take some action around it. Is that right, Jeff?
I think that sounds great.
Yep.
The next objective is 1.3, advocate for the library and its services through natural partnerships. And the number that we have not completed on that one is, in terms of action plan, number two, develop elevator speeches. That's something that has been assigned to myself and Lexi, and we're working on that, and that's due in a couple of, a couple of months. We anticipate actually creating something that's a little bit more robust than that, and creating something that might be an actual advocacy toolkit, and we're looking at fleshing that out more than just simple speeches. We think elevator speeches will be one part of this larger whole, and we'll be working on that in the coming months. And then objective, goal two is to better reach underserved communities. And that's how can Danforth Public Library leverage its strong outreach programs, local history collection, strong community partnerships, and city support to better reach underserved communities. 2.1 is identify underserved communities, we believe we've accomplished that. And you can see some of what we've done in the next couple of pages, that's on page eight, nine, and 10. Objective 2.2 is to strategically attend more community events to reach more underserved communities, we believe we've substantially completed that objective as well. Those are listed on pages 10 and 11. 2.3 is to develop and offer programs that target specific underserved communities, and we believe we've accomplished action plans one, two, and three, and we still have work to do on four, five, and six, and those are all in the upcoming quarters for this year, quarter one, quarter three, and quarter one again. You'll see on pages 12, 13, and 14, some of what we've, some of the actions we've taken to complete those steps. 2.4 is to implement and evaluate the library social worker program to determine feasibility of continuation, and we have completed that and made a recommendation, obviously, to the city to continue funding for that position, for both of those positions, rather. And then goal three is to better engage underserved or underrepresented communities in our facilities. How can Danforth Public Library leverage its strong outreach programs, local history collection, strong community partnerships, and city support to better engage all patrons in our facilities, especially people from underserved or underrepresented communities? 3.1 is to evaluate materials and collections to determine what meets the needs of specific community groups, and action plans one and two have been completed, we believe. Three, we're still working on, that's in quarter three of this year, and that's to assure that the local history collection represents diverse aspects of the community. 3.2 is evaluate and determine, and develop programming to determine what meets specific community needs, we believe we've substantially completed that. And you'll see 17 and 18 summaries of that. On page 19, 3.3 is to assure a welcoming culture for all patrons. We have accomplished several of those action plans, while remain still as number three, identify ways to use native languages in strategic ways, and that's set for quarter three of this year. And then likewise, 3.4, diversify staff to better reflect the community at large, we're making good progress on that, and there are some goals still set during that time period this year, as well as ongoing. That's not something that's just going to be done overnight, and we're not necessarily going to complete that, that'll be ongoing. But we are making good progress, as you can see in some of the, some of the information on pages 20 and 21, on some actions that we've taken to improve in those areas. Are there any questions on the strategic plan 2022, 2024 update? That's through 2022 and 2023, providing a summary of some of the actions that we've taken as a team. Great, Joe, I think we're ready to move on to new business B then, the motion, and I can provide information on that as well.
Right ahead.
Okay. So the current strategic plan is scheduled to end this year on December 31st, and library administration recommends that we extend that plan by six months to end on June 30th, 2025. That extension will provide new trustees, yourself, as well as three new trustees that we're going to have in July, an opportunity to get a little bit more acclimated to their role on the board, learn a little bit more about the library overall, and then have a chance to shape the strategic directions for the organization over the next three-year period. That extension will also allow library staff more time to accomplish some of the remaining goals and objectives. The alternative to that, based on the cycle right now, is we start the strategic planning process in July of this year, and then work through that to have it ready by January 1st of next year. And the challenge with that is that we'll have essentially four new trustees coming on to create a strategic plan in a short amount of time. So our recommendation is just extend it a little bit, and this will also keep us in compliance with our accreditation with the state. And then secondly, what we do is, what, the other recommendation we have is to shift future strategic planning cycles to correspond to fiscal year instead of calendar year. And we believe that'll provide a little bit better synergy and is in alignment with the organization's other planning documents, such as our annual report, the business plan, the library director's work plan, the library operating budget, our capital improvement program plan, and statistical reports. So we believe by doing strategic plan by fiscal year rather than calendar year moving forward, starting in July of 2025 with a new plan, is going to be better overall for the purposes that we've outlined here. And our recommendation is to have a motion to extend the strategic plan end date from December 31st, 2024, to June 30th of 2025.
Can I have someone make that motion?
I have, this is Laura, I have a question.
Okay, Laura, question?
Yeah, I just, the arguments that Jeff outlined make a lot of sense to me, but since I've only been on the board for two years, I just wanted to make sure that in prior years, the decision wasn't made to deliberately offset strategic planning, so that way there wasn't such a heavy lift. Like, it makes sense to me to have it aligned with the fiscal year, but I just want to make sure that we're not undoing a previous deliberate decision. So I'm just looking for any sort of historical knowledge from the group before we move forward with that.
Malavika, you need to unmute? Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
As far as, as far as I remember, Laura, no, there was not, I mean, to answer your question, no, there was no particular decision, as far as I remember. It was not done on any kind of purpose, it was just done the way it was.
Okay, just wanted to make sure, because this makes sense to me, but I didn't want to be, you know, I want it to be long-term thinking. All right, thank you.
Right, right, you're welcome.
So I can make the motion to extend the current strategic plan to align to the timelines as outlined by Jeff.
I second it.
Okay, we'll go for the vote. Judy?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Sylvia?
Yes.
Laura?
Yeah.
Malavika?
Yes.
My vote is yes. I haven't missed anybody, have I?
Nope.
Okay, with that, I think we've covered everything, unless anyone has anything else?
Joe, I, do you find mine?
I hear you, go ahead.
Oh, I just wanted to say hello to Michael, and welcome.
I'm Malavika, nice to see you. Nice to meet all of you.
We'll meet you, I'll meet you next month, but welcome and congratulations.
Yes, Michael, welcome. I know you're a longtime supporter of libraries, so I'm happy to have you among us. Thank you for, for joining us.
And please don't take this personally.
What?
And nobody was there tonight.
Oh, and Joe, thanks for stepping up at a moment's notice, appreciate it.
No problem. Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
No move.
Second?
Second.
All right. Any objections? Okay, thank you all, and we'll see you next month, if not sooner.
Thanks, guys, bye.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Have a good day.